...how to have a guaranteed turnout in person for the trustee meeting. Thank you for the breakfast.[6.62][6.62](laughter and applause). Unprecedented, I never get bacon at home.[14.12][14.12](laughter). Well, we're coming down to the end of the year and I want to start off with some recognition for the folks that we're really looking for, and that's the faculty and the students. We are starting to see the honors come in, and I just want to mention a few of them. First, Paul Falkowski, who's a distinguished professor and director of the Rutgers Energy Institute, has been named the co-recipient of the 2018 Tyler Prize for Environmental Achievement. This is widely considered to be the Nobel Prize for the environment. It is a really big deal. He will be going to Washington to receive the prize in a few weeks, and we're all very proud of Paul and of the institute and the honor that he brings to not only himself but to the university. Yaramar Bonilla is a professor of anthropology and Latino and Caribbean studies in SAS, was named one of 31 winners of a Carnegie Fellowship. And we just learned that the Board of Governors distinguished professor Helen Furman, co-founder of the Tony Data Bank, has been elected. She is a fellow with the American Academy of Arts and Sciences this year. And as far as our students are concerned, not to be outdone, we are now up to 22 full bright awards for our students, which give us, I think, pretty much an all-time record, maybe one shy of an all-time record, but we'll get there, and puts us right up to the very top universities in the nation for producing full bright scholars. And you recall, last year, our team competing for the HULP Prize won the regional award, which was for the United States, and went on to win the global award for the HULP Challenge, which was a million-dollar prize. Well, hard to think of how we're going to beat that, but this year we have two teams, one of which won the regional prize in Boston, so they've won the U.S. competition, and the second won the regional competition in, what was it, in Singapore, I guess, or, no, Shanghai, I'm sorry. So they won from that region. So we've got two teams competing for the global award now. They're both onto the global challenge, so we've got two possibilities of being a double, which has never happened before. Two of our students have earned Goldwater Scholarships, and one has earned Cambridge, and we're still waiting on the rest of our honorary scholarships as the year winds down. And just to show you what our students can do when they get wound up, the dance marathon this year raised again more than a million dollars. For the second year in a row, Dan stole all weekend and raised more than a million dollars. Really an amazing show. So our students are doing a great job, as we know that they will. And, you know, we talk about inputs to the university, and once again, we're running ahead of projections in terms of the students that we're bringing in, but more importantly, the outputs, and seeing where our students go, the prizes they win, the kinds of jobs they get, the fact that 85% or 88% of our students are fully employed or in full-time graduate studies within six months of graduation. That is really, really strong showing for our students. That's something we can be proud of. And of course, we're coming down to graduation and commencement, and on the New Brunswick campus, we have just announced that Dan Shulman, president of PayPal, will be speaking at the commencement. Queen Latifah will speak at Newark, and Anita Hill will speak at Camden. So we've got a real lineup for our graduating students, and we're looking forward to a trifecta here. We've got another record group of students to join the alumni. On other business, we had the Middle States Review in March, and we had a committee of folks around the country led by the president of Penn State come through to review us for our 10-year Middle States reaccreditation. As you know, there's seven standards that they look at, their mission and goals, ethics and integrity, design and delivery of the learning experience, support of the student experience, educational effectiveness assessment, planning, resources, and institutional improvement, governance, leadership, and administration, and then there are a number of sub standards within them. I've done a bunch of these in my career, both as a reviewer and as a reviewee, and it's like the IRS coming in for an audit, there's always something to find. This is the first one that I've ever had where we had a completely clean evaluation. Every standard, every resource.[303.33][303.33](applause). Across the board, clean, no reservations, and three minor recommendations, two of which we had already done. So this is as good as it gets. I'm assuming that when they present their findings to the commission this summer, we will come up with a full evaluation for the next 10 years. So I want to thank everybody who participated in this, especially Barbara Lee and Ann Gould, who led the team for the past year and a half to compile the data and put this together. Remember, this happened, we probably don't know, but this happened on the day of the last snowstorm, when we actually had to cancel classes and everything else. The university was closed, and we managed to get the reviews done in our administration offices by Skype and by phone and by everything else, and everybody cooperated and everybody participated, so we got it done. I'm particularly pleased with the commendations that they appended to the review, and I just wanted to point to the ones that I think were most significant, and I'll read them. But here are the things that they found, and they found them at a significant enough level to call it out, put them in the report to the committee. First, they commented on all the changes that have made since integration, and how positive the Rutgers community is about them. Second, about how much stronger and better our U is now than it was five or 10 years ago. Third, impressed with our dedication to access and affordability, key words that we have, we keep harping on. They found a high level of transparency, they found robust shared governance, and they were willing to call all those out. Now, the thing that I'm most pleased with is that those comments didn't come from us. Those comments came from the faculty, staff, and students that they go out and talk to, hundreds of people during the visit. They're not listening to us, they're reflecting the views of the community. So we've pushed everybody really hard the last few years, a lot of change undone yet, but it has been a difficult and sustained push, and you could have expected to have a lot of backlash in a situation like this. I'm just delighted to see how much support and positive momentum we have from our faculty, students, and staff. Very important for us, and I know we around the table are all, that's your administration, just really pleased to see that. The last thing I want to mention is that our rapport with the governor, I think, is strong and growing stronger. We've had a number of events with Governor Murphy on campus. He chose to come to Rutgers last week for his 100th-day speech, which was delivered in Trace Hall, and he's made a number of announcements from campus, continues to highlight Rutgers as a linchpin in his program for the innovation economy and the ads and meds and the other things he's trying to do to drive the economy of the country. And Hillary Clinton, as you know, was the case professor of public affairs a week ago. And just to wrap it up, we once again locked out of the weather this weekend on Saturday for our annual Rutgers Day, 10th Annual Rutgers Day, set a new record again with 106,000 people on campus coming to see what we had to offer on all of our campuses with all of our faculty and students out there showing their spirit. So it's been an interesting spring, and we're looking forward to the end of another semester. And I'll stop there because I know that our chancellor, Nancy Kean, has a great presentation for you, and I want to take it wherever I'm going.
Thank you, President Boaschi, and Chancellor Cantor.
Well, welcome, everybody, again, and do enjoy breakfast.
Ah, thank you. Really welcome, everybody. We're glad you're here, we're glad it's not snowing, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. So in line with the work, the amazing work that you all have been doing in the trustee committee on financial aid, I'm going to focus very much our comments today on really what the strategy for reaping the diversity bonus is in this university, in Rutgers University in Newark, but in Rutgers more generally as well. As you know, New Jersey is really one of the leading states in thinking about the diversity explosion that Bill Frye at Brookings and others have targeted. We have the third most dense immigration state in the country, we are already among millennials, a majority of color group of millennials in this population, and we really, by 2028, in this state will be a non-white majority state. We have enormous diversity on so many different dimensions to really tap into as a great public institution. And one of the things I would say, just from a competitive standpoint, is that our peer institutions are not really moving the dial in as big a way as you would have imagined. So if you look at various reports coming out in The Times and elsewhere, there is, first of all, really not a movement of the dial in terms of reaping the diversity talent that is out there, and places are not doing as good a job as we need to do in bridging the higher-ed divide between community colleges and four-year research institutions. So what are we trying to do at Newark? Our talent and opportunity strategy in Newark, both at Rutgers University Newark, but I want to frame it more broadly in Newark, is really to create pathways to opportunity within our city and more broadly, obviously, within the state and beyond. So I would point, for example, to our Newark City of Learning Collaborative and Rich and Bloomfield, I would give a big shout-out to, our very important partners in NCLC, as we call it, which is really to create educational pathways and increase the post-secondary attainment rate of residents of the city of Newark to 25% by 2025, and we're definitely on our way. The city has been galvanized across all the major anchor institutions, and RBHS and Rutgers Newark are deeply involved in this to create a Hire By Live Newark set of citywide goals. And Rutgers Newark is deeply involved in individual schools like Chabaz High School in the South Ward of Newark, where we are a university-assisted partner. We're working, for example, with the Apple Corporation to create a city of coding, opportunities for learning coding throughout, both in Chabaz and throughout the city. Those are just some examples of the broad background of how we think about reaping talent in Newark. Now, let me dive deeply, and let me say, you have in front of you the handout for these slides, because there are a lot of numbers, obviously, hopefully, keep it and look at it when you can't go to sleep, but you may not be able to see them all up here, and I won't go through every number. But the thing you should know about Rutgers Newark is that we have been growing substantially. We have outdone what were originally our academic year 1920 goals in terms of total undergraduate population, and we're being careful now because we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. But what is important about those classes of undergraduates is that they are extraordinarily diverse. So we are increasing diversity in every dimension you can imagine. 58, almost 59% of our students are eligible, 31% are first-generation, we have a substantial population of Dreamers, and the thing we are very proud of is we have substantially increased the number of Newark residents who are attending Rutgers University Newark. In the last four years, there's been a 59% growth in that number. I'll get back to how we're doing this in a minute, but one of the key areas where we have really put our emphasis is to create what we think of, in a very modest way, as a revolutionary honors living learning community. In fact, we are hoping, The New York Times is doing a spread on this, we'll see, you never know, but we're hoping, so keep your eye out for it. But the honors living learning community is dedicated to local citizenship in a global world, and it has indeed a remarkably diverse set of students. So nearly half are Newark residents, many have come through pathways that would not typically be in honors living learning communities, but that are graduating with amazing success. So this year, when Queen Latifah speaks, a Newark-born resident, I would say, when she speaks at commencement, she'll be speaking to our inaugural group of honors living learning students who will be graduating, who are transfer students, because that's a very important piece of the honors living learning community. So we are up to 162 in total now, and a new class will be coming soon, and the applications are extraordinary, students formerly incarcerated, students aging out of foster care, students coming from undocumented families, students all over New Jersey and beyond dying to get into the HLLC. Now, one of the things that we are very committed to doing is to really creating a financial, oops, a financial aid strategy that enables us to reap this diversity bonus. So these are for the year 2016 to '17, and let me just go through a few of those numbers, but again, you have them in front of you. So 78.6% of our undergraduates receive financial aid. That's a very substantial number of students. The average award is about 15,000, the average gap after aid is about 11,000, and 49% of those who graduated in 2016 entered as first-year students, not as transfer students, had debt, and their average debt was about 27,000. So that's what we see as our challenge, because clearly, it is our hope to keep that debt down, to close those gaps, and to continue to give financial aid to as high a proportion of our student body as we do. The other thing that, and I won't go over all these numbers, but I think that's really important to remember when you look at all this, is that in giving financial aid to that higher proportion of our students, we are leveraging a tremendous amount of federal, state, and outside scholarship aid. So it's not just Rutgers University Newark or Rutgers itself giving internal institutional aid, although we give a lot of that, it is that we are bringing to the table substantial resources from federal, state, and other sources of scholarship funding. And let me give you some deep dive here. We have two very clear financial aid priorities, and they intersect, actually. One is what we call Run to the Top. So the Rutgers University Newark Talent and Opportunity Pathways Program takes any resident of Newark who qualifies for admission and any county college transfer, and that's a very important commitment for us, with an adjusted family income of $60,000 or less has a full last-in tuition scholarship. This is extremely important to our priorities, and I am thrilled to say that within the last two years that we've been running this, we now in total have over 1,700 undergraduates who are eligible for Run to the Top, and it's a real mixture of first-year entering Newark residents and county college transfers. And why do I put such an emphasis on that pathway of county colleges? The vast majority of first-generation students in this country, and certainly in New Jersey, will have their first taste of higher education at a community college. And so it's extremely important that we create successful pathways from community colleges to four-year research institutions like this. The other thing to think when you think about financial aid is that community college transfers are transferring in and graduating at very high rates, and they do it quickly, so that they are accumulating far less debt than if they entered as first-year students. And there's a lot of talk nationally about that, certainly Governor Mercy has been emphasizing that community college pathway, and we are very excited about what's happening here with that. In line with Run to the Top is our honors living learning community that I mentioned. That's a full residential scholarship, which is very unusual for this institution, since the vast majority of our students are commuters. So it's very important that we're creating this residential experience for such a diverse population. Of those, we have so far totaled about a little over $3 million in residential scholarship aid, and 70% of the students are also receiving full coverage in tuition and fees from a variety of forms of both federal, state, institutional, and external scholarship aid. So those programs are really reinforcing each other and reinforcing our talent and opportunity strategy. There are a lot of words here I don't expect you to read, although it is again in front of you, but what I wanted to do is quickly run through the kinds of scholarship and cohort and pathway programs that have been so successful here that we are really trying to build. We have a very robust relationship, one of the most robust for them in the country, with what Don Graham's family in Washington started, the Dream.us Foundation, that is supporting at this moment 34 of our Dreamers at Rutgers Newark with scholarships. We have focused here on community college transfers, so that the 29,000 that Dream.us gives as their maximum aid gets those students through here without debt, and it's been wonderfully successful. Again, our student speaker at commencement this year is one of the Dream.us scholars. Similarly, we have been working with the National Science Foundation for several years now and are one of the real stars in the country, and this is not only Rutgers Newark, although we lead the LSAM program here, but nine institutions around the state of New Jersey, including Rutgers New Brunswick, are involved in the LSAM. We have literally doubled the number of underrepresented minority STEM students who are graduating from these institutions, and most recently, we got what NSF calls an S-STEM grant, and that is coming here, and what it is, is to have the pathway between ECC Essex County College, Passaic County College, and Hudson County College into Rutgers Newark, be supported by grants that go to students who are STEM majors at those three county colleges, and then follow them and bring students here when and if they transfer. So we're very excited about the STEM students that we are graduating. There are many other programs that we, pathway programs. Leon Cooperman started one for students in Essex County, and we are one of the three institutions that he is supporting with $9,000 last-in scholarships for each of our per student per year for four years. And what's wonderful about the Cooperman program is that they get mentoring both in high school and then once they come to Rutgers Newark, they are doing really well. The Bold Scholars are again part of HLLC, and those are two cohorts of community college transfer women who are supported by the Helen Gurley Brown Foundation. You all know Rutgers future scholars, Rutgers Newark has 70 currently enrolled, and it's a tremendously successful source of support for our students. Most recently, we made a coalition, and these are just some examples, we have many more, with the Mexican consulate, who is very interested in the fact that we are a Hispanic-serving institution federally designated and has been pulling together sources of scholarship support for our students. Now, our students are not only getting supported financially, but most importantly, from my perspective, they are getting supported with a huge amount of on-the-ground work by faculty, other students, and by staff. The metaphor we use for it at Rutgers Newark is that they're carrying a suitcase. So when a student comes for a financial aid question, what you really find is that in that suitcase are a whole set of questions that need support. And what you'll see here are just some examples. So we have what we call Run for Success, which is a predictive analytic online platform where advisors can use predictive analytics to figure out what would be the best course load for a given student to graduate early. Or they might be finding themselves doing so much work at a local convenience store, and these are all real examples, that we really need to get financial aid involved, and get them involved in a very significant way. Or their parent may be undocumented, and they may be worried about deportation, and we need to get our immigrants' rights clinic involved. Or they may be food insecure, and we need to get the food pantry involved. The point of all this is that financial aid is one piece, it's often actually the entryway to a whole set of other support services that are really critical to students graduating and graduating on time. And these numbers I won't go through, but they just give you an example of how much these support services are being used by the Rutgers University Newark students. We have a lot of, not enough, of course, but a lot of emergency funding going to students if they find themselves homeless, we figure out how to get them in the residence halls. If they are one course short, we want to make sure they're graduating. So there's a lot of very specific interventions that are going on. And I would argue that that support for success is what is leading us to be one of the nation's leaders in closing what are often traditional graduation gaps. So both the Trust and Washington Monthly have pointed to us many times, but recently in particular, for having closed, really substantially closed, the traditional graduation gaps, both the six-year graduation gaps, and now with our three-year graduation rates for transfers, we're doing really well. So for example, if you compare the average of the years 2003 to '07 with 2011 to '17, you'll see that the black-white gap has been reduced to minus three percentage points, and the Hispanic-white gap has been reduced to minus 3.5. That is, I will put that on parallel with virtually any other institution in the country at this moment. We are well ahead of what one would see as the predicted graduation rates, given background profiles and given the level of need in our student body. So we're not resting on any laurels, we're not giving up on that, but we are really pleased with the direction that we're going in there. And then the final thing I would say is we are doing all of this in order to reap the diversity bonus. Now, I'm sure all of you have read the phenomenal book that all of us and I co-edited called The Diversity Bonus, and if you haven't, you should. It is the pragmatic case for diversity. It is the notion that businesses, organizations, policymaking, classrooms, all reap a tremendous bottom-line advantage in complex knowledge economy problem-solving by having a diversity. And diversity is a cognitive notion in this context that is fed by identity diversity because we know that identity diversity leads to different kinds of knowledge repertoires and experiences that people bring to the table. So we have an extraordinarily diverse student body, New Jersey's an extraordinarily diverse state, we are prepared to reap that bonus. Ted Baker, one of our phenomenal entrepreneurship faculty in the Business School, has literally created an entire entrepreneurship curriculum around the notion of the massive cognitive complexity that he can find in the student entrepreneur groups that he has on campus. The Braven Program is a wonderful nonprofit that has teamed up with Prudential and other corporations to try to work with Rutgers Newark first-generation students, to match them with mid-career professionals as mentors, and to create a curriculum that gets them on a track. Bob mentioned career placement at Rutgers at large. The Braven Program is a wonderful program, and you can see from the statistics there that they are having real success. So... So the students who are ninety percent students of color, seventy percent low-income, and all first-generation students are twenty percent more likely to have gained a significant mentoring experience than comparable students and Braven does very good statistics on this, and sixteen percent more likely to hold full-time employment within a year of graduation than the national average. So it's these kinds of active programs that we argue will really make the difference at the end of the day. I mean, the idea is we're bringing them in at the outset, but what we are doing here is reaping that benefit in a very active way, both in how we support them and in how we honor their talent and really let it bloom. Um, and then send them out in the world to make it a better place. So we're real proud of our students and real proud of the faculty and staff that are making this work. So thank you for your service.
Let me just add how proud we are of Nancy and her team. Uh, in the time that she's been here, the change in Rutgers Newark is nothing short of a revolution. Uh, not just the campus and not just the admissions, but the degree of integration with the community. Uh, the relationships with the community are something that I've seen change so dramatically over the last few years. And the outputs, we've been talking about this stuff for years. Nancy came in here saying she was going to do it. Um, but what we see now is that she has done it. And we are putting up numbers that lead the nation, just lead the nation. And certainly lead Rutgers and are a hurdle for her fellow chancellors to step up to. Uh, and just let me point out, you were talking about the Rutgers Future Scholars and we all know that program well. Uh, the first cohort of Rutgers Future Scholars are now reaching graduation. I should tell you that one of those Rutgers Future Scholars was one of the twenty-two winners of a Fulbright Scholarship. That is truly something.
And I'd like to echo that. Thank you Nancy for a very informative and timely presentation. I certainly appreciate your leadership. Okay, moving along. Uh, during my first meeting as chair in September twenty sixteen, I brought forward to the board of trustees my interest to understand the financial challenges students were facing, given the cost of education. You may recall that we discussed TAG Tuition Aid Grant Program and RAG, Rutgers Assistant Grant Fund during our meeting. I later discovered there were other challenges and several trustees commented that this was an area that required further research. As we wrapped up our annual board meeting in June twenty seventeen, it was very clear that a more focused approach was needed. It was very important to know more about the increasing gap between what students receive in aid, to Nancy's point, and the cost of attendance. I then asked Jose Priosa to chair the newly formed Task Force on Student Aid. He and I knew this would be a huge commitment and this would be, this would take place with a lot of tight timelines. While there's still a lot to achieve in an area of need-based aid, I'm pleased with the final report and look forward to hearing Jose's presentation. But before I turn it over to Jose, I want to thank him for his committed leadership along with the other dedicated members of the task force for their outstanding work. Also, I would like to thank him and the secretary's talent and staff for all of their assistance with our final report. At this time, I'll turn it over to Jose and I would like to mention to the board that please hold your questions to the end and we'll have a Q and A period upon his completion. Jose?
Okay, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time today to review the report on the Task Force Student Aid. Our presentation today, it's comprised of four sections, also with an overview of the report and a recommendation for the university. Then I'll ask Jim Rhodes to join me up here and he will cover an overview of the foundation and recommendations for the foundation, the public policy advocacy, the work that's being done there and our suggestions in that area. And I'll come back and cover the trustee recommendations and the next steps. Um, the task force's objectives were to study the financial challenges faced by students at Rutgers, undergraduate students at Rutgers. We focused on studying and assessing the types of funding and scholarships and grants available to students at the university as well as the transient funding gaps for the universities' needed undergraduate students. We studied the impact of the grant and the federal study programs have on the retention and graduation rates for our students and also studied what the combined effect of the grants and the study programs would have on the accumulation of the debt. Our second objective was to educate the trustees on these challenges and to develop a set of recommendations that could help address these challenges. The task force members were Bill Bass, Mrs. Ophicio, Roberta Canarac, Toto Lopio, Yatunde, Mary Bapa Oraku, Jim Rhodes, Dudley Rivers, and myself as the chair. Our special thanks go to the Office of the Secretary, Secretary Kim Pazva, and her staff, Kelly Sachecki, and Patrick Noligal for all the help that they provided and the support in getting all the information that we needed and for the development of the report. With respect to this code, we focus on the undergraduate students. We do recognize that all of our students, undergraduate, graduate, and professional, face a number of financial challenges. However, given the complexities and the differences on these challenges and the timeframe of the report, we focus our research on the undergraduate population. Graduate students, in particular those in professional and non biomedical fields, do not enjoy the same federally funded financial options that our undergraduate students receive. And in many cases, have to resort to loans to fund, to fund their education, which could amount to a significant amount of debt. We do recommend additional research on the various challenges that graduate professional students face to gain a better understanding of those. In our review, we met with representatives from pertinent university units involving student financial aid aspects in Guadalupe School. For the University, we met with the Office of the President, the Chancellors of Newark, Brunswick, Camden, and our DHS, Student and Academic Affairs, Financial Aid, Enrollment Management, the Rutgers Foundation, External Affairs, both of the state and the federal advocacy. We would like to thank all the members of the administration for their support and information provided to the task force which formed the basis for the report and to the presidents, chancellors for their support, insight, and advice. Uh, we reviewed the trends and components of cost of attendance and the various and diverse type of aids, scholarships and services offered to students, including financial education, the use of emergency funds, and food pantries. So here's what we see. Overall, when you look at the financial aid currently provided and the resulting net price, here's what we see. The university has done an admirable job in, to help keep tuition increases as low as possible. This, when compared to the aid provided, results in a net price or the net cost of attending Rutgers that compares fairly with most peers. Rank, when ranked from lowest to highest, Rutgers University in Brunswick ranks the first lowest when compared to other public universities in the Big Ten Academic Alliance. Rutgers Newark ranks third lowest and Rutgers Camden ranks fourth lowest with respect to their peers institutions. In addition, most students who apply for need-based aid receive some type of assistance. For fiscal year twenty seventeen, approximately thirty thousand four hundred or seventy percent of the students applied, the students applied for need-based aid. And about eighty-eight percent of those, or twenty-six thousand seven hundred, received some type of aid. At the federal level, this aid includes the Pell Grants, the federal work-study program, and federal student loans, which provide about two-hundred million annually to Rutgers students. At the state level, the aid consists of the New Jersey tuition assistance, or TAG, which provided about ninety-eight million to Rutgers students in twenty seventeen, eighteen academic year, as well as the educational opportunity fund and the NJ Start Two program. In addition to this, the university also provides a number of financial aid programs, some of which are listed here, so let me just touch on a few. Rutgers Assistant Grant, or RAG, provides funding for the most financially disadvantaged students. It can be used for fees, tuition, room, board, books, supplies, and other costs related to attending Rutgers. For fiscal year seventeen, RAG supported, provided assistance to about eleven thousand students. There's Rutgers Future Scholars, Scholars who supported about eighteen hundred scholars as of January twenty seventeen. There are also merit-based awards. The university awards about thirty-eight million annually in merit-based aid, including such scholarship as the Presidential Award in New Brunswick. There are approximately thirty merit-based scholarships offered by the university and these are in addition to scholarships that may be provided by individuals, schools, or programs and also different from endowed scholarships than the foundation may manage. At the local level, we have run to the top here in Newark that serves about twenty-and-a-half percent of undergraduates students, bridging the gap in Camden that serves about ten percent of undergraduates students, as well as student affairs scholarships such as the retention scholarships on the Woodpower Fund at New Brunswick. There are also emergency funds. Individual schools and student affairs offices have small emergency funds that can be used to help students with immediate needs. Uh, again, to cover things such as books, fees, and other incidentals that may arise. Food pantries have now been opened in all three locations to provide students with access to food and toiletries while at Rutgers. In addition to these monetary aspects, the university also provides advice and access to services for students in crisis through the offices of the Dean's of Students, the care teams here in Newark and Camden, and the one-stop student service centers. However, even with all this effort, there is still a gap between what students receive and what is required to cover the cost of attendance. For fiscal year seventeen, about three-point-three percent of students had their need fully met via combination of need and merit-based award. For, in that same period, the unmet gap for the average student receiving aid ranged from a low of forty-five hundred at the low end of the estimated family contribution scoring, federal scoring system, to about thirteen thousand four hundred at the high end. This is what, these are the numbers represented by the yellow and the red slices on the chart. And this was left to be covered by non-need-based aid, loans, sorry, and family contributions after all need-based grants and loans and institutional merit awards are applied. Families tend to resort to private loans, borrowing from relatives, 401ks, and in cases also refinancing homes to cover, to cover this cost. In total, the average amount of unmet need for fiscal year seventeen was about eleven thousand two hundred per student. The net result of all this, it's an increase in the level of debt, which is not only a Rutgers problem but a national issue as well. Um, the level of debt with which students graduate will depend on a number of factors, including the number of years they attend Rutgers and whether or not they commute to school. For example, in New Brunswick for fiscal year sixteen, the average loan debt net for a resident student who graduated in six years was about twenty-five thousand four hundred and for a resident student graduating in four years was about twenty-two thousand. This however, is below the average for New Jersey, which for the class of twenty sixteen was about twenty-eight thousand. And for the US, this range from a low of about nineteen thousand for Utah to about thirty-five thousand in Pennsylvania with about a midpoint of about twenty-seven thousand. Food insecurity is another aspect experienced by Rutgers students, which again is a national issue as well as a reputation. The university has recognized that this is an issue. There are now, as I mentioned, three food pantries in all three locations. The hours of operations do vary by location. Utilization of these pantries we've seen has been increasing and additional access is warranted. Student, students at the low end of the spectrum also face emergency situations requiring some amount of dollars, sometimes as small as two, three, or four hundred dollars, which could make the difference between then having to defer their studies for a semester or more or having to drop out of school altogether. Um, each location Dean's of Students or Office of Student Affairs sets aside every year a nominal amount of emergency funds. However, it's in the understanding of the task force that there is a specific mandate set aside every year during the budget cycle for these purposes and that the need is much greater than these offices are able to raise. These funds are used for emergency situations that mineralize the need to changes in financial condition of the students to cover basic costs such as fees and books. Um, they also used to cover emergency housing that may arise because of a student's loss at home because of a disaster, a natural disaster. Um, and also to provide some students with grocery gift cards to cover perishable items that are not available through the pantries. Financial literacy is another aspect that we looked at. And it's an important aspect in helping students navigate through their financial decisions as oftentimes we see that students could exacerbate their situation by making decisions that could take them longer to graduate and in some cases lose their financial aid. In addition to all this, this situation may deteriorate in the coming years with the sun setting of the Perkins loans, which is another set of funding available to students. That will result in about nine million losses of funding available to students today. So here's our, here are a summary of our recommendations in this area. Related to jobs on campus. We are recommending that the university increase the availability of meaningful jobs for students on campus in the following ways. Increasing the work-study program match Rutgers in Brunswick to a hundred percent, consistent with the matching that is done in Newark and Camden. Universities are required by the federal government to provide about twenty-five percent matching of the funds the federal government provides. In fiscal year sixteen, all three locations overmatch this amount with assigning one hundred percent of funds to match the federal funds. But in twenty seventeen, New Brunswick reverted back to the federally mandated twenty-five percent. Uh, making the change back to a hundred percent would result in additional cost to New Brunswick of about one-point-six million dollars. Uh, but it would also increase the number of students served and the number of hours available in work-study jobs. We'd also like to recommend that the university modifies the policy that exists today so that students who qualify for the federal work-study program cannot end in their second, third, and fourth year as well as in the first year. Today, if the students decide not to take the federal work-study program award in the first year, they lose it, it's not offered again. There are significant benefits to students who participate in these programs, including understanding of semester cycles, which may allow flexible schedules during exam periods. And moreover, on-campus employment has been shown to facilitate stronger foundation to the university and lead to higher retention and graduation rates. The university issues also fourteen efforts across university units to provide additional non-work-study job opportunities on campus that may be available throughout the university. One such set of opportunities is offered by jobs currently available at our DHS. Regarding the loss of the Perkins loans, the university should consider the expansion of the Rutgers University Loan Program. This program could be expanded over time to accommodate approximately nine million dollar loss of funding left by the sun setting of the Perkins loans. It is our understanding that the university is already looking at loan options to reduce the impact from, from, from the loss of Perkins. Um, previously, also universities were required under the program to make what is called institutional capital contributions into the Perkins loan program. Rutgers made those contributions up until two thousand and six and it is expected that as those funds get repaid back into the, into the Perkins fund, those funds will come back to Rutgers, which then could be used to provide additional loans to students. Studies should be conducted on the viability of doing that. In addition, the university should consider providing additional funding into the Rutgers loan program of about two million a year over four years. into the Rutgers loan program of about two million a year over four years to fully fund what will be lost from the sunsetting of the Perkins loans. As all these loans get repaid, then they could revert back into the loan fund to then issuing loans, making the program sustainable. With respect to financial literacy, we are recommending that the university enhances the current financial orientation survey into a financial literacy education program to include the following: interactive module capabilities with what-if capabilities that will allow students to assess the impact of different levels of debt on their future when they start a career, considering potential income from that career, which will allow them to make better financial decisions. We'd also like to recommend that the university look to provide non-credit financial workshops and seminars to students so they can become more educated about financial decisions in their personal lives. And also, finally, explore what other universities or peers institutions are doing with respect to financial literacy, identify best practices in this area, and adopt best practices at Rutgers. Awareness should continue to be raised among university community about food insecurity on campus and on the various services available to students and how to help. The university should also explore, with regard to food pantries, a way to consistently fund the pantries. A stationary income or food will allow for better and consistent planning of services offered across all three pantries and to be able to expand the number of hours of service. We'd also like to recommend that a predetermined amount be set for emergency funds every year be set aside during the annual budget cycle, either from local budgets and central budgets. There is also an opportunity to look across the university and understand how the emergency funds are being used today and understand what their commonalities that then could be addressed and funded from a central fund. The university should also continue to build on today's efforts to build out a coordinated system across administrative units. Focus on student success rates that could lead to a decreased time of graduation, looking at all aspects of student lives, addressing the root causes of some of those issues, and identifying students have risk currently. Leveraging the care teams, the one-stop student service center, and the student experience improvement initiatives. I'd like to now turn it over to Jim to cover the next couple of sections.
Thanks, Jose. The task force recognizes the importance of focusing on more fundraising for need-based aid. And in that effort, we'd like to thank Nevin and his team for working with us through this process. And he was very helpful to making our informed decisions here. The RU Foundation has made significant gains in fundraising with alumni participation, although alumni participation has been uneven over the years. This is significant because alumni traditionally provide most student support funding. So one-third of the RU endowment, $322 million, is restricted for student support based on donor directions. Twenty-four percent fiscal year 2016, $243.8 million in student aid funds have come from here. Student support from the foundation, though, is not keeping up with need in terms of the percentage of the fundraising, and it has decreased over the last five years. The task force has worked with the foundation to identify and break out student support categories, as illustrated here, to better understand the areas of need and opportunity. In going through the numbers, the task force recommends an increased and sustained focus by the foundation on emphasizing student support, particularly in the upcoming campaign. Mary has already had discussions on behalf of the task force regarding this, including the recommendations of listing need-based aid as one of the top three campaign priorities in the upcoming campaign, and to use historic data as our baseline to measure our success in this effort. We also recommend a strategic plan that emphasizes goals and outcomes and metrics to help us measure our success and to keep us focused and on task. The need for increased awareness is also a key to our success. Another recommendation has also come to fruition regarding the awareness aspect of this, and that is the Rutgers Assistance Grant Program, which was recommended that this become an option, a visible option on the foundation website, which has occurred and is now available. The focus on and messaging has also had an effect and is resonating in various other aspects, including on Rutgers Day, where the trustees led by Mary D. Martino and Ken Johnson led an effort to set up a matching fund for the RAG program. And in fact, we raised thirty-two thousand dollars with everyone's support in the room, not just to do that for the day, for the Giving Day, but to also instill in us a focus on this program and to inspire us to think of this as we go forward, supporting need-based aid. And also, the RUAA focused on the RAG program too in its efforts. And in fact, they received a thousand-dollar challenge grant, which the members of that group led by Gloria Vanderham are dedicating to the RAG program. So again, getting the word out, increasing the focus, challenging people to step up and support is already having an effect. And then finally, Mary and Courtney have met and worked together, and they've presented at a recent overseers meeting on the importance of these efforts to, again, spread the word and to get people involved. My task on this group was to focus on the public policy aspect of this, and I'd like to thank Pete McDonough and his team for working with us on this effort. We met with external affairs to learn about federal and state programs and RU efforts to affect positive outcomes in the District of Columbia and Trenton. And I'd like to thank Pete. His staff was really able to educate us on the efforts that are out there, what's already being done, what's available, and again, very helpful. Rutgers University students received $300 million in federal programming funding, Pell being the most popular. But on the state level, the task force focused on the largest program, the Tuition Aid or Assistance Grant Funding Program. And in that, we found that $420 million statewide for the current fiscal year was allocated by the state of New Jersey. Ninety-eight million four hundred thousand of that was provided to Rutgers University students, fourteen thousand students approximately, which is up from ninety-six million the prior year. And it does exceed the amount of money students receive from federal government Pell grants. It's significant. In fact, New Jersey has one of the most significant programs of this type in the nation, something at least for me, I was surprised to see because we often sometimes think that the focus is not on these programs. But in fact, historically, the legislature and the executive branches, as demonstrated or illustrated up here in this graph, shows that support has grown over the years almost consistently. While the support and the increase in the level of funding has been consistent, however, it is generally agreed that the program is about $60 million short of where it should be in terms to be fully funded. What did I do? While the annual increases in state support are welcome and meaningful to the students who receive the funds, this slide illustrates the widening gap between Rutgers tuition and the TAG funding increases. The task force questioned would fully funded TAG up to $40 million or $480 million bridge this gap. Student Affairs reports that this would be beneficial to the neediest students. Individual increased TAG would range from $126 a year to $552 a year for individual students based on their need. But concerning the likelihood of increasing state funds for the TAG program, where there's already limited funding in a challenging budgetary year, where competing interests and competing priorities are all going after the same pot of money, it's not likely that we can rely on the state increasing funding, and we're not sure how effective it would be even if that were to occur. So what can be done to affect positive change in outcomes? The recommendations from the task force, while it is likely that the executive branch and the legislature will agree to increase TAG funding in the next budget year, fully funded TAG is less likely. But that doesn't mean the university should stop advocating for increased funding. It should, but Rutgers should also support efforts to restructure the program to address needs that will likely garner legislative and executive support. For instance, TAG funding for Dreamers. These are students that already receive in-state tuition eligibility. It is estimated there are 420 Dreamers registered at Rutgers University, although it's not an exact number and not easily identified, although I believe these are the students that already have applied for the in-state tuition, so it's a solid number. But to expand the program, TAG to the Dreamers, would allow them to receive up to $11,000 annually or $4.6 million per year for Rutgers students. This would, of course, benefit students in all New Jersey schools, not just Rutgers. And the projected annual need increase for need would go to $19.2 million in the state budget. This is a proposal that is already moving through the state legislature. President Barkey has testified in favor of this, and we believe that we're going to see an implementation of this in the future. So we're very happy to see that. Another option that we would like to see put forward is the TAG funding eligibility for year-round. In other words, to allow students who were enrolled in summer school to be eligible for TAG funding for those courses. That's currently not the case. We believe that this would be budget-neutral because TAG funding is already available for a ninth semester, so it's already anticipating that a student would go beyond the four-year graduation. This proposal would simply reallocate that funding to be available during the four-year time at Rutgers or at any of the schools. It would help students graduate on time. It may help students graduate early. And if this should occur, it would also have the added benefit of increasing capacity or opening up seats at Rutgers as students get through the system as they should, either on time or a little bit early. The task force also discussed potential formula changes, which are just concepts at this time. But in other states, the eligible tuition rate for a TAG grant would be tagged to the tuition level of the state's flagship university. So for students attending a school that costs more than that, the TAG funding grant would only be eligible for up to that point. Also, we discussed the potential of imposing accountability requirements based on a program such as DOF where there are graduation requirements. How that would happen, not sure yet, but it would be an opportunity for the schools to show to show that they have skin in the game, if you will, for producing results that are tied to a student's success for receiving TAG funds. TAG is attached to the student, not to the university, so things like that would have to be worked out. And that's what we have for public policy. Thanks, Jose.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, so now the recommendations that pertain to us. Here's what we are. What task force is recommending? The board trustees to consider the creation of a trustee challenge fund. This could be an annual challenge for trustees, including merit-based trustees, to provide for an agreed-upon amount that could then be utilized for discretionary emergency funds or need-based scholarship. We should also strive to increase and formalize the trustee advocacy at the state and federal level. We have started, but a lot more work and consistent advocacy is needed, particularly in the area of student aid. We should also be champions for student aid engagement at the state level and actively support the university's continuous work on TAG funding and serve as philanthropic role models for the university. The board trustee leadership should continue educating trustees on issues related to student demographics, impact on financial need, new development around student aid, student financial challenges, and trends in sources of funding. Regular updates should also be provided to trustees on the progress of the recommendations from this report. And finally, the trustees should name an implementation task force to enable the recommendations in the report pertaining to trustees. So where do we go from here? We recommend that the university president and the chancellors assign a joint working group to assess the task recommendations and develop the proper implementation plan and timelines. We recommend, as I just mentioned, that trustees assign an implementation task which would address a recommendation for continuing education and outreach campaign in support of the foundation, a trustee challenge fund, and advocacy for need-based aid. I realize that there are a number of recommendations in our report for the university to consider, in addition to all the things the university is doing already, which I hope from the report you realize that there is a lot of work the university is doing in this area. Some of these recommendations that we are putting forward require funding, and given the university priorities, they will have to do a proper assessment and develop a proper plan. However, as trustees, the most important thing we can do is to identify where we can make an immediate impact regarding need-based aid in support of the university and the students. We have started with the additional support provided this year to RAG, but more is needed. We do have full control of how significant and how fast we want to go after the recommendations in the report that pertain to us. For that reason, I'm asking all of us to rally behind the recommendations and to be part of how we implement them. My hope is that after reading the report and this presentation, you're more aware of the magnitude of the need and the realization that we can't be bystanders in this issue. Finally, I would like to thank Mr. Best for the opportunity to lead this task force and to my fellow trustees who hard-justly worked on this report. Thank you, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with all of you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report from the task on student aid, and we can open it for questions.
Thank you, Jose. And before we get to the Q and A period, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that these recommendations, how strong they are and how important they are, these are not mandates. We know that these recommendations need to go under some type of review, and we're going to use the highest and best opportunities that we can to leverage the existing resources that we have to get to the endgame for student need. With that, I'll open up the floor for Q and A. Yes, Richard.
In earlier presentations that touched on student finance and loans and that sort of thing, I've always, when the speaker would talk about, and I have one specific recollection of a couple of years ago when the speaker referred to the fact that, well, some students didn't really understand that a single room was more costly than a double room. And so the... And so the level of naivete, it's delicate, it's a delicate question, but I'm always left with the unhappy feeling that the university is never doing quite enough. We always should do more to teach students about fundamental personal financial facts of life. And I strongly urge that, and I'm so delighted to see the recommendation, that that subject be emphasized more strongly. But it really troubles me and astounds me that we keep going back to, well, we should do more in this particular area. Why aren't we doing it, or are we doing it?
So I'll take that one, and if the members of the administration want to comment, I'll welcome that. So I think the university, they started first, there was a survey that was created for students who receive aid, they have to go through this survey. The survey does provide a very general view of loan implications. What we found, we did go through the survey and we found is that more specific examples and what we're recommending, what-if type of modules, be applied. But I think the university started creating, you know, taking steps to educate the students, particularly those who receive today financial aid, on how to understand that. I believe that the counselors also do sit down with them, practice is student-by-student basis, right? So when students run into emergency, there is counseling that goes into looking at their loan situations and possible options. But you're right, I mean, we do need a more concerted effort. I do think that we should learn from what other institutions are doing in this area to educate the students. It's not just a Rutgers issue, it's just across the country.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, another question, but I just want to take this opportunity to commend Jose and the task force for, I think, one of the most comprehensive and insightful reports that have come out of the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a gentleman. I am proud of my fellow trustees who worked on it and the passion that they show in this space, and also the passion that administration members who work in this area have to try to solve the issues that the university faces today. Thank you.
Just a question. Early on, on your first slides, Jose, you had the financial aid rankings. At one point, you said it was in the Big Ten, which were actually 14. I'm not sure with my Camden and Newark, was that in the Big Ten as well? That was nationwide?
No, they have their own set of tiers that they rank themselves against, and that's what we used.
Okay, is that something? Thank you.
All right.
A comment regarding students not really understanding what all their loans may amount to. Unfortunately, I think some of them see the adults in their lives behaving exactly the same way, so I don't know, you know, what we'd do about that. But also, a suggestion I have is that certainly I, as a member of the task force, was surprised at the degree of difficulty some students have in just getting through each day financially. And a thought that I have would be that there are many alumni who don't contribute anything. I don't just mean, I mean, of our half a million alumni. Who knows? Maybe a suggestion that whatever fund is set up for need-based aid, that alumni contribute to that with some good reasons could pique their interest and help these students who need the aid and also help increase our alumni participation and the foundation, of course, will get a higher financial figure for the year. So I think that would definitely be a suggestion of mine to go to the alumni in particular who have a feeling for Rutgers, who for whatever reason haven't been moved to contribute yet.
Thank you for composing the task force bill, and thank you for your leadership, Jose. This is excellent. Sorry, can't figure out my microphone. This is excellent. I think it's wonderful that the trustees are supportive of such a large student issue. Regarding financial literacy, one, do we know if any of the other schools that we looked at in the Big Ten offer financial literacy programs that we could perhaps mirror? And two, would, one of the recommendations was not financial literacy, and I was just wondering what, and if we could do something like a Mooka Massive Open Online Course? That is like three questions.
Okay, so yes, there are other universities that are addressing this issue, which is why we do feel that we need to kind of drive more direct conversation, really get into how they're solving the issue, and we should just look across, right? Because we don't have to invent a wheel here. I mean, there's just a bridge what's up there, and then build from there. So going again over your questions, because I got a little confused on that.
No, that's fine.
The online.
Online, a massive open online course?
Yes, we didn't look at that aspect. We do know that we have online curriculums right now off of Rutgers. You know, there was an article just in general, I mean, I think people expect online courses to be a lot cheaper than just regular courses, and they're not, right? Because you have to pay for technology and everything else. You do may be able to solve the house inside of the cost of attending, but yeah, we really didn't look into that aspect, and just let that come out there.
This is Bob Ortonson. The need-based aid, would that be managed by the foundation or by a group involving more direct trustee involvement?
I'm going to try to answer the question, but today, the need-based aid is managed by the financial aid office in the University. The foundation manages scholarships that are merit-based, more merit-based aid, and they are based on what donors kind of direct, they want their funds to be used for.
And let me add, that is not the trustees' role to manage those type of funds. That would be the administration and the exiliary departments to handle that aspect of need-based.
Well, if the foundation takes on an additional role, they have to do some pre-planning for sure.
Yeah, I think so. Let me clarify the recommendation for the foundation. I think what we found in our review is that in the past, need-based aid has not been at the focus of the foundation. So the recommendation is that as the foundation goes into the next campaign, that raising funds for need-based aid scholarships be a focus on the foundation. Those funds could then be available to provide help on earning this base.
Bob, let me see if I can clarify your question, that, you know, the issue of making need-based aid a priority is something that is really at the heart of setting the campaign priorities for the foundation, and that's something that's done by the administration in conjunction with the foundation, which is part of us. We set the priorities, we go through the strategic plan and get the recommendation that need-based aid be high on that list. Frankly, when I go out and talk, the two top things I'm looking for are scholarship and endowed faculty professorships, and has been for the past five years, and that doesn't require any additional support from the foundation, that's an institutional priority setting. Second, we already have the infrastructure for dealing with financial aid, whether it's need-based or not, we don't need any more infrastructure, we just need funding. And I just, my comment is, I look at this from the CEO point of view and look at the recommendations that you're making, I see five to 10 million dollars a year worth of cost. You already know that you include it right in our operating margin here, and we are very, very close to the line because we put everything we have extra already back into financial aid. Now I put another three-point-some-million dollars into raising the minimum wage for our student workers to $11 an hour, that's financial aid. We'd love to do all these things, but keep in mind, this is an unfunded mandate and there is no extra money. So this is a cost that you're recommending we incur on an annual basis. So if you're looking to incur an additional $10 million worth of cost, I'm asking for an additional $50 million or more of endowment to back it up, because we don't simply have that money now pretty much. And so I'm a little cautious about looking at these recommendations as being something that we can do without some other revenue stream. We need to be realistic about this. And I think as a last statement that I would make is that you might want to involve the board governors in terms of things that happen where you're coming from this group with something that you are asking the administration to implement, given the relative position that you're working. So you might want to have that conversation.
Thank you, President Barty.
On that final note, Bob, that you mentioned, Sandy, who is the chair of the Board of Governors, and I have been contacting each other, he has asked the secretary's office to send that information out upon the presentation of this report to all of the Board of Governors. And I suspect that there will be a presentation as well to the Board of Governors regarding our findings with the task force. Yes?
Yes. One question. Do we have any funds left in our trustee reserves?
So Bob, at this time, we know that the trustee reserves, we went back and we did the research, those reserves that the trustees had were donated to kick off the billion-dollar campaign a while ago, and it might have even been before then. So at this time, there's no trustee reserves that my office is holding on to in any way.
Okay. Good question.
Thanks, Bob. All along the way, as we met people from Rutgers, north to south, administration, the people underground, I was particularly impressed that we were catching up to what they are doing, that they have a full understanding of the need of the students on their campuses and their schools and the needs that we went through here. And Mr. President, I agree with you, but as I understand it from Chairman Best, this is a challenge to the Board of Trustees and to the other governing body to show the administration, to show the student body that we understand and that we're going to stand up and support the need where we identify it. So I applaud, you know, the efforts in regard to the recent Giving Day, but it's a start. And I know there's a vast majority of the members of the trustees, and I'm sure of the governors, that agree with you, President Barty. And, you know, I'm committed to doing what it takes, not a big donor, but with regard to, you know, helping get the word out and making sure that we can, you know, put in place a process going forward to keep this front and center, then, you know, I support it from that aspect. Thank you for those remarks, Jim. Any other comments, questions, before we move on? Mary?
First, let me just say excellent work, Jose, by you and the task force. It was clear that there was a lot of time and effort spent, and I certainly appreciated the information that I got from the report. Yeah, it was interesting, and I had a question on tag, actually, it's just a little, that's funded by the state of New Jersey from general revenues, I presume? So that chart that you have, I think in the report it's 20, or it was 13 here, it'd be really interesting to see a line that shows the drop in state appropriations. So, I mean, the legislature, it's going to go like this, right? And the efforts that we make to address, among other things, ensuring graduation on time, maybe earlier, all of that can have a direct impact in terms of how the state is funding higher education in New Jersey. So I just thought that would be really interesting. I didn't have time to kind of do the research myself, but I'm going to guess, you know, it's all the same pot, and it's interesting, the legislature, do they realize that it's great that they support tag, that's wonderful, and let's stay with it, but there's also this other part, which is the cost of education, and where is the state supporting that as well in that regard?
We'll work with Pete Taffes to get that information.
Hence more advocacy to your point.
Just one more thought on going back to the financial literacy comment, and, you know, especially with President Barty's comments on funding. I mean, is there an opportunity to partner with some of the private sector? I mean, this is what a lot of people do for a living, and there's a lot of great institutions around here that, you know, do this, they offer these types of things. You know, I don't know how administratively you hook them together, but I do think there's an opportunity, because this is what a lot of the private sector does, we have millions of Americans every day. And so, you know, maybe there's a linkage, given one's such a great proximity to a lot of people that, you know, at first would be education, but also could lead to something that's useful for them as well, so.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I didn't mention that in our report here, but it's one of the things that we have talked about, how do we leverage some of the tools or experience in the banking sector to help develop this and help educate our students, something that I had actually, Chancellor Cantor had actually mentioned that in my meeting with her. So it is definitely one aspect, thank you.
So one other aspect of this that we might want to discuss as we talk about financial aid is to remember that financial aid is always done on the basis of an annual cost of attendance, which comes down to tuition. And what we can do to keep the cost of tuition increases at a minimum, you know we've worked very hard over the last five years to keep that cost at less than inflation, we've been down around 1.85% in the last couple of years. So a part of the equation that hasn't been talked about is that, and this year as we're looking at our labor negotiations, we just need to keep in mind that nearly 65% of our operating budget is the cost of personnel. And for every percent of increase in the cost of personnel, just in the educational sector, that is, the part of personnel that applies to our provision of education, would require a 1.3% increase in tuition. Now, we have been looking at the last three years, a 2% to 2.5% per year increase in the cost of the personnel component of our budget, which is that big percentage. We've been able to keep the cost of tuition below that increase by cutting everywhere else that we can, or we're pretty close to the bone everywhere else. So as we look forward, understand that as much as we want to increase financial aid, we also need to pay attention to keeping the cost of attendance from growing too much. And as we look at 24 unions with contract settlements coming up, I can't guarantee you that we're going to be able to attain that goal. But when you think about recommendations for financial aid, please balance that with the other aspect of this, the other important half of this, which is keeping the cost of attendance from going up, or that will complicate the financial aid picture even more. It's a complicated balance that we have to run as we go forward here.
Jean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a really impressive group of people, the trustees, and I believe they have been totally underutilized for the last 20-some years. Two things, one was just mentioned, the private sector. And there are a lot of people on this board, as well as the Board of Overseers and the Board of Governors, that are involved with the private sector. We should be working with the trustees who have that relationship to see if they can get their company to help participate in this. A lot of great people on this board with those connections. The second thing is working the legislature. Pete does a good job with his crew, we have some pretty good people in his shop. But the trustees used to, in the good old days under my favorite guy at Blaustein, used to routinely lobby the legislature. We had it by district, et cetera, et cetera. And the president's point is on point, and I truly believe, and I think we all understand, the state has out front of us, they have a serious budget situation. But the current governor now has this major push for county colleges being free. We need to get this board, as well as the other boards involved, in dealing with Trenton, there are some people on this board that are very connected politically. So using the connections of this board, as well as the overseers and the Board of Governors, I think it'd be useful in getting money out of the private sector, better than we're doing now, and also possibly doing better with Trenton. now, and also possibly doing better with Trenton.
Well, Dudley, I patched you up about four times, Dudley. Sorry about that.
First of all, I want to thank Jose, Jim, for, for condensing a tremendous amount of information into a very concise presentation that made it possible. We stayed waiting for the whole thing, so that's great. The, I, I, I think, you know, today, I hope everybody else was the same way, that today is a very good day to be a trustee. You know, when you look at that information that was just presented, it's a significant accomplishment, and, and the bottom line from my perspective on it is it leads to an improvement in student life, enhancement of the overall student experience, and that has to be something that we should be striving for all the time. You know, when I look at this topic, when it first came up, you know, the full deprivation and all of that, you know, to me, the Board of Trustees represents the moral compass of university. So it's important for the Board of Trustees to embrace this issue and resolve it once it was identified. So, you know, with the task force and the report, I think that has happened, they're very good recommendations, you know, hopefully they will be implemented and we will get to where we only want to be in the end. You know, having, having said that, I think that there, there are a few people that I want to specific, like, first of all, being, you know, my Sherri Piazzetta. You know, when, when you, when you talk to Jose, you see a nice easy building done. And then Bill gave him a responsibility that, that I think threatened him if he didn't get it done. So, so I was happy to see when I saw him today that he showed up with his briefcase instead of his whip. Because, you know, it, it takes a lot to, to accomplish, you know, what he played and Jose to pull together, so. So, thank you, Jose, and, you know, I think we all enjoyed working with you, and it was great to see you pulled it all together.
Thank you.
And in addition to Jose, you know, we have to thank Chairman Best, because he enthusiastically embraced this issue. If we didn't know what RAG and TAG were before, we definitely didn't know what it is now, as most of you do. But, and in addition to that, I want to thank, you know, Dr. Barczy and all of his senior staff, because, you know, we didn't have to go around twisting arms to get support from, from, from all the Bob's departments. They are the subject matter experts on this, in all of these areas, and they were already far down the road in addressing these issues and willing to solve these issues, you know, with the students best interested in, in mind and at heart. So, so that was encouraging to see, and I think that was a cause for all of Bob's senior staff. So, so they were, they were with us every, every step of the way on this.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment, anyone from the phone, on the phone, or any more comments before we wrap this up? Yes, Anthony?
So I guess I'll give the closing statement. I thought this report was really informative. I hear a couple of different points, and one, I understand that with any recommendation we need to have money, but I just want to remind the board, and something that resonated with me when reviewing the report, is that there's a human aspect behind it, and that, you know, students' lives are impacted by the work that we do here. And, you know, I want to first kind of talk about my story and how appreciative I am because these programs I directly benefited from, and that's probably the main difference for me sitting beside you and not graduating before a year to graduate Rutgers. So these programs are meaningful, they're impactful, and while we see all the numbers here and we go through this program, the report, there's real students behind it, and those lives will be affected by the decisions we make here and the work we do in the future. So thank you to the committee and to the board and the administration for the leadership. Really enthusiastic to see the next steps in this.
Thank you, Anthony. I think we had a very good discussion. There's more to come. As Dudley indicated, this has been something new and dear to me. I take it with a lot of passion. There are a lot of backstories behind my interest in leadership in this area, and I can tell you, when I heard a student at this university indicate that they were $192 short from going to finishing that semester, I had to ask myself the question, why? I won't quote, I won't make any big quotes on that, on that point, but this is very new and dear to me, and I'm very enthusiastic about it, and I'm very passionate about it. So I would hope that we will all be engaged around this issue. It's not going to go away. As the scriptures say, the poor will always be among us, but let's try to do something about it with here at Rutgers University. With that, I'll move to the next item on the agenda, I'm going to call Mary DiMartina, talk about how to fill the department update.
My pleasure, and to follow such a great discussion on, on such an important issue. And so I typically, as you have known over the last year, have given update on board giving. It's really exciting this year because of all of your work and effort, and it's, you know, Ken and I working together, Ken Johnson's been a great partner this year, and particularly having a focus on giving last, in March for Rutgers Giving Day. Thanks to you all, we raised way more than we expected for RAG, for the Rutgers Assistance Grant Program. And it's truly a pleasure, I think, for Ken and I, as we started the journey last summer, just talking about how do we generate interest in giving among board members, building on the momentum of the Rutgers Assistance Grant Program, which really, I think Heather worked with the foundation to provide that as an opportunity to give, and I know further work by Mary this year, got it right on the website for the foundation as well. Just to give you some of the numbers, we on, for, for Giving Day in March, the board total, total giving was over $49,000 by 27 board members. And of that amount, $25,000 went to RAG. It's a little different, Jim, than the number that you provided. There was some cleaning of the numbers, and so we had $25,510 go to RAG. That includes matches that was provided. As you all know, we had several board members step up and agreed to provide that $10,000 match, a challenge, which really, we wanted to use and leverage to generate excitement and support, and I want to thank them for, for doing that, and I want to thank everyone for giving this year, and in particular in March. I think it's a great, a great, a great statement for us, and I think in some ways we've tapped into something that I think we can only grow and make stronger. I'll also mention that in addition to 23 board members giving to Rutgers Assistance Grant Program on March Giving Day, Rutgers Giving Day, we also had a fair number of non, I'll call them friends of the trustees, let's say, who gave as well to the Rutgers Assistance Grant Program. And I think that's how we want to think about growing that, that support. And I know Ken, who's way more social savvy than I am, did a tremendous job in terms of just, you know, getting the word out on social media as well. So, Ken, is there anything that you'd like to add at this point?
Actually, no, I just want to echo your thanks and enthusiasm for, for continuing to do this as we go forward.
And just to give you a quick update for the year, so far, we've got just about all of our board members giving. There's a few who are, who still have an opportunity to give for fiscal year 18. I will find you. If, so, but, but I encourage everyone, there's always that opportunity to give. And we've raised over $800,000 as a board generally for the year, so. I also want to say before I, before I conclude, I want to thank Nevin Kessler and his team. They were great to work with, Melissa, Rebecca, and Julie in particular. Ken and I met with them, spoke with them, and they've been just terrific partners in helping us build that momentum, so thank you for that. And also to Kim for all those last minute emails that we're getting out to board members, and just, just all the work that goes on behind his teams that the foundation and the Secretary's Office made really much easier for us. So, thank you.
I have a question. When you say board members can be active and emeritus?
That's right. So the way that count, that we, that we're counting, if you will, are 100%, is active board members, voting board members, with the exception of students, and active emeritus.
Thank you, Mary. At this time, I'm going to ask Jim Dougherty to talk a little bit about the nominating committee process. Jim? Thanks, Mr. President. We're going to change topics a little bit here. A second topic of interest, as noted in the task force on assessment summary report, is the nominating committee and its processes. We'd like to have a discussion to alleviate some of that confusion and dispel the myths that may be surrounding how the nominating committee works. Frank Huntley and I will be part of this discussion to add our year of experience, and Frank, many more than mine, except for seven or eight, I think. But first, I'd like to turn it over to Wilma Harris, who's the current chair of the nominating committee, and she will begin the discussion.
Thank you very much, Jim. We have a very full agenda, so I'm going to keep my remarks brief and to a minimum which can make everyone happy, but we have adequate time for any questions that you may have, as well as questions related to the timeline. The nominating committee this year was comprised of Alan Costa, Ron Camudi, Ken Johnson, Carol Sampson-Landers, and Bill Best Ex-Vicchio, and we've completed the tasks outlined on the timeline through May, and will be reporting back to you in full at our June 12 meeting. The tasks, however, were not performed in the order as presented on the timeline. As an example, you may recall, the deadline for trustee nomination was December 15. As such, the review process did not begin until the new year and not during the November-December timeframe indicated on the power form. For the new members of the board, the nominating committee is responsible not only for alumni, charter, and emeritus trustees, Board of Trustee Officers, nominating committee members, but also trustee members to the Board of Governors, the Camden Campus Board of Directors, and members of the Rectors Research and Education Foundation, the Governing Board of the Waxman Institute of Microbiology. To ensure compliance, we refreshed ourselves on relevant documents affecting the nominating process, such as our bylaws, the Rectors Act of 56, operating principles for the Board of Trustees and the nominating committee. We received more nominations than we could interview, so each of us reviewed every nominee's credentials individually and used a tool on the director's desk indicated whether we felt that he or she should be interviewed. The Secretary's Office, which was key in making the nominating process run smoothly, compiled our individual results and divided the committee with the composite. Then as a group, we vetted the nominees and came up with the list of individuals to be interviewed. Regardless of what position we were considering, the discussions were open, and all the committee members contributed his or her opinions and the basis for those opinions. For the process to work, the committee members had to feel comfortable that they could be open and honest and freely share their opinions. As such, confidentiality was critical to the functioning of the committee. Since interviewing is an art and not a science, we reviewed and as needed, devised interview questions to ensure that we were increasing the likelihood of getting information that we needed to make the best decisions possible. Through it all, our committee's operating principle was the underpinning that we had to do what was best for the university. The university in its totality, not a subset, but the macro university, that was the driver of every action and decision that we took. So when I timed it last night, that was 3 minutes and 41 seconds. The rest of the time, we're opening up to questions, including our real nominating leaders, Frank and Jim, who've done this far longer than I. So questions, please? Jean?
But just, in the past, I've nominated, I always nominated for the board based on the qualifications, the local people at the time. This is the first year that there are five people nominated, maybe six, only like one or two of them had been interviewed, which other people who had nominated, who met Latinas, women, and that kind of thing, were not interviewed. So my question is, how many people were nominated and how many people were interviewed? And is there a way we could fix that next year, because it was very awkward for me over the last two or three months, because the first person told me who was interviewed, and then I have three women tell me they didn't get a call. One was a black woman, one was a Latina, and the other one was a white woman.
I'll, I'll, I'll start with that, and, you know, just commenting on, on Jim's comment about me, I've been on the nominating committee for six of the last seven years, which, I don't know if that's a record. It's, it's, it's a lot of time, first of all, for anyone that circle the nominating committee, I mean, you meet like nine, 10, 12, 15, I forgot, you meet so often. It depends from year to year. So there are very few openings this upcoming year. So what you don't want to do is if you get 40 nominations, which we appreciate, is to bring 40 people and interview them. Somewhere, it was somewhere north of 30.
That's good.
It's good, it's excellent. But, but for two or three spots, you don't want to bring in 30 or 40 people and interview them, and, you know, you don't want to waste their time either. So there's a process for taking the nominees that we have, and Wilma outlined it very well, and kind of funneling it down and narrowing it, based upon the broad experiences of the nominating committee, and we have a lot of people that circle the nominating committee for that purpose, to get broad views and ideas, and we all understand what the trustees are as stewards of the university, and the importance of coming in and protecting us from undue political influence, which we've done for years. We bring those people in, and then we decide what the subset of people that are getting to are. I encourage people that submit nominations to inform their nominees that they may not get selected the first year, they may not even get interviewed the first year, because the one thing we don't want to do is to have our trustees and the broader university community go out and get people excited about serving on the Board of Trustees, only to disappoint or even worse anger them because they feel like they've been disrespected, and we certainly don't want that. So for those of you that have nominated people that haven't been either selected for an interview or selected to, to join our board, just, it's a numbers game. So as long as we set the expectation when they do that, I know I do that when I look for people to nominate, but that's, that's an important one.
Yeah, well, listen, and I totally understand, and it's good that we have some of the committee members, we never used to have that in the nominations, so we really feel that people are going out for good people. If you could let us know when you decide you're not going to interview any more people, that would be nice, because when, when the one guy called me, said he had an interview in March, and then, and then I, months later, I had two other people call me, and I'm like, I don't know, so I asked him, she said, we're not doing any more interviews. But it would be easier is when you decide at one meeting, this is it, this is all for interviewing, let the nominators know, so then I can let them know, so they don't have to wait for that phone call they're not going to get.
So, you want to start?
I said we're not doing any more interviews at this time, because nothing is final until the general vote.
Right. And, and I was going to add to that, and again, six of the last seven years on this committee, I've seen a lot. The, what you want to do is the process is you narrow it down and you break people in for interview. Some people come in and they're ready on interview, some people you come in and you find out it's just not a good fit. And what we don't want to do is tell people no before we finish with the whole process, because we may want to go back to that list of people and bring in additional people to interview. So we really, when you're nominating people, please let them know they're not going to find out anything until we take the vote in June, and then it's final, and then we, we let everyone know. And that's important as well, because nominations will go in, I mean, they went in late this year because they were December, but a lot of times they go in in September or October, and people do have to wait a really long time, so it's important to let them know.
I tried to-
And, and we're, we're not holding off just to hang them out there, but if they're quality candidates, the nominations committee may go back and bring in additional people to interview.
I tried to clarify the expectation for this year's candidates, that we would know, we would finish our process no later than mid-May, just because it does take a while. And I didn't, what you being Eric, send a bad hand, pay a- just because it does take a while. And I didn't want you being arrogant, send a bad hand, pay up miserably, because we do have to go back, and it has happened. And some people don't want to be interviewed, even though they were selected as potential interviewees.
And another minor point on that, Jean, is sometimes life changes for people, and we didn't like to close the door on anyone until we were absolutely certain, got up to that June date, that we had the candidates that were going to move forward. And as far as the selection process, we've always kept in mind with the help of the Diversity Committee, the composition of the boards, but I think all of us almost like to, I mean, we like to read those applications blindly. And like Wilma was saying, try to find someone who's going to fit for the university's needs and for the trustees' needs. And I think in the past umpteen years, that this process has been shot at that boards.
Other questions? You mean I could have spoken for another nine?
No, Dudley, that's a question, that's...
Oh, Dudley, sorry, I can...
Um, one thing I would hope the committee is looking at is, aside from the candidates, is an improvement to our bedside manner. Because I know, I mean, the nominating committee is a tough job, you know, I know, and I was on there for several years. You know, you had, in this case for this year, you had thirty, thirty interested, probably variable, very qualified individuals for two or three spots. So, you know, I look at that as an opportunity to make, you know, two or three people very happy and an opportunity to really dissolve twenty-seven, twenty-eight very loyal Rutgers supporters. And that's unfortunate, because everybody can't be on the board next to me, and you have to make those hard, those hard choices. But one of the problems to me has always been in how we deliver that message, whether it's back to the person who did the nomination or to the people who had to unfortunately be turned away. Because therefore, those are people that you're trying to cultivate into the fold of, effort made, very loyal Rutgers supporters and potential donors. So, I don't know if part of the committee's charge is to look at that, but I know when I was at the nominating committee, that was something that needed serious attention. And it's hard to say what the best way to do that is. So, if you have the expanded minds of the full committee, maybe you can come up with something good. That would make life easier for the people delivering those, that bad news to the people.
Thank you, Dudley. Mike?
I hesitate to ask a question, because I may be assigned to the committee as an assistant. But just tying the nominating committee discussion in with Mary's presentation, is there a discussion with candidates about fundraising expectations?
There is.
I'm going to defer to, it's called time, talent, and treasure. I think just one of the questions that go out.
One of the questions that we asked candidates this year, irrespective of whether they were Rutgers alum or an alum of another institution, how have they given their time, their talent, and their treasure to the institution they claim that they've written? Because it's important that they have a history of giving back. The assumption is if they graduated from Lehigh and they give there and they become a member of our trustee board, they would do something similar for Rutgers. So, that is a question that I feel very strongly about, and we are concerned about that.
Thank you very much, Wilma. I certainly appreciate that presentation.
Just as Jose commented on his committee, we had an awesome, awesome nominating committee, and thank you all.
We have the chair of Diversity and Influence Committee, Anthony, you want to...
I just want to speak about my experience on the nominating committee. I know that fundraising was something that was central. Without trying to break any confidentiality, I know that it was always a focus. It's always been a focus whenever you interview somebody, that you want to see the capacity and the heart to give and how they exactly feel about Rutgers. And also, in my experience, the bedside manner, from what I saw and what I heard in explaining to individuals who had actually interviewed and then perhaps were not chosen that year, it was great. I mean, I don't recall anything like it.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Wilma, while you have the mic, I'd like to call on you to offer, to present the state for this year's officers.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. The nominating committee of the Board of Trustees met nine times between October 30, 2017, and March 26, 2018. The proposed recommended slate of nominees was previously posted on the board portal for review. I would now like to present the nominating committee's recommendations on the candidates for election of chair and vice chairs of the Board of Trustees and trustee member of the Board of Governors.
Thank you, Wilma. For those people who are considered, for those positions, that would be Mary, Jim, and Ron, could you please exit the room?
On behalf of the nominating committee, I recommend the following nominations for chair and vice chairs as indicated with the term July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019. Chair, Mary I DiMartino; Vice Chair, James F. Dougherty; Vice Chair, Ronald J. Rudy. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Becky? End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. I would like to congratulate Mary. I love you a lot too. And the two vice chairs, congratulations as well. I look forward to working with you in the future as well. At this time, I'm going to ask Mary to assume the role as chair.
Thank you, and thank you all for that support. I'm going to ask, Wilma, you want to continue with...
Not really, I need to only leave. Nothing personal. Now, on behalf of the nominating committee, I recommend William E. Best as trustee member of the Board of Governors to succeed Kenneth M. Schmidt for the term July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2024. Madam Chair, I so move.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much. It has been great in this particular role. I look forward to continuing to serve the university and the new O.G., and definitely on as well.
This concludes the report of the nominating committee on June 12.
At this time? At this time, I would like to ask George Kreis, the Ameritai Chair, to give a brief report, please.
Thank you. The trustee Ameritai Council was reconstituted this spring semester and had their last meeting on April 26. With a mission to ensure engagement of our Ameritai, we set out to make sure that this engagement is done in a manner to help drive forward the mission of the trustees. Our first task we took on was to recognize that outgoing trustees face a transition as they leave, and we did not want to lose these loyal Rutgers souls as they transition off the board. So, we are working out a communication to send to our outgoing trustees to let them know the methods and the ways that they can continue to stay engaged as they transition off the board. However, more importantly, our board chair helped fire up a different passion among the group. In the meetings, we heard more about the student, sorry, the task force on student aid with the capstone, what we heard today. The need for us to help those in need is evident, and that is consistent with our mission. The trustee Ameritai Council will be taking this issue on as a focal point. We'll be sharing the results of this task force with both our active and inactive trustees, and we will be championing this with our networks. We will also be joining the trustees in any challenge they do as they move forward, and we will use this as our access to engagement going forward. Our efforts will be kicking off this week with a communication to our Ameritai, informing them of this great work done by the task force that we have seen today. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the move forward with Ameritai. At this time, I ask Dudley, would you report on the candidate board of directors?
The candidate board of directors made four times since the last report to the Board of Trustees. During those meetings, the candidate board of directors adopted Ms. Susan McQ as a member to the board and held its annual election of officers, where I was elected chair, and Dr. James Dougherty was elected vice chair. Ms. Lori Jones was elected secretary, and Executive Vice President Michael Gower was elected treasurer. The board also received updates from Chancellor Phoebe Haddon regarding Rutgers University Campus Hall 2017 incoming class, which included a thousand new students. She highlighted the boost diversity specifically with regards to first-generation students and the impact of bridging the gap scholarship program. Chancellor Haddon also updated the board on recent additions to the campus leadership team and announced the launch of a new search for a dean of the Camden College of Arts and Sciences to sixteen dean Chris Lindemire, who stepped down at the end of 2018. At most recent meeting, Chancellor Haddon announced that Ms. Anita Hill served as commencement speaker for Rutgers University Campus and highlighted honors received by six Rutgers Camden students with their hairworn during a fire in a residential building on Cooper Street on March 23. The board also received an update from Mr. Larry Gaines, Senior Vice Chancellor for Administration and Finance, who reviewed capital projects, including the School of Business Camden and the additional parking deck next to the Mercy and Science Building. Lastly, the board received updates on the Roman University Rutgers Camden Board of Governors, also known as the Joint Board, regarding Phase One and Two of the Joint Health Science Building. The Joint Health Science Building is a seventy-million-dollar, ninety-five-thousand-square-feet collaborative between Rutgers, Roman, Camden County College, and the Joint Board. The Health and Sciences Center will support instructional programs, has biomedical research, laboratories, the Center for Successful Engineering and Medical Simulation, those facilities. The Joint Health Science Center will support instructional programs, has biomedical research. A groundbreaking fitness project occurred in October of 2017. The event was well-attended by President Bar Chief and Governor Riss. The building will be completed in January 2019. The Health and Sciences Building is the first building of its kind in New Jersey where two four-year institutions, the Medical School, the County College, are housed in the same building to develop a multidisciplinary educational lab. The Joint Board has acquired property across the street from the Joint Health Sciences Center for development of Phase Two. Phase Two of the campus plan involves the development of a one-hundred-thousand-square-foot, sixty-five-million-dollar facility. The facility will include a unified health sciences library, allied health spaces, classrooms and labs. Rutgers University, Roman University, Camden County College, and Roman College of Rochester will collaborate. It will also accommodate a research incubator, healthcare-related retail office spaces, research space to advance privately-funded research.
Thank you, Dudley. Any comments or questions for Dudley? Okay, thank you very much, Dudley, for that report. At this time, I would ask Talat, if you could give us a...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
...comments on the joint committee of investments?
Again, that's a mouthful. We might have to, we might have to change that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the last time I've updated this committee, we've had three meetings and the joint committee of investments. Normally, I would have sort of given this board an update on our FY17 results and our NUCUBO numbers earlier in the year, but I'll do that now. Our FY17 return was twelve-point-seven percent, which is pretty much in line with our peers. We tend to, as an endowment, we're, we tend to be defensively positioned, and as such, we do better in down years than up years. So, we are very pleased that we sort of are in line with our peers in FY17. Our endowment finished the year, this is NUCUBO, so it has some trusts and other assets in addition to the long-term investment pool. Our endowment finished FY17 at one-point-two-two billion, putting us, and, sorry, for those of you who care, as the eighty-fourth-ranked endowment in terms of size in North America, the university endowment. That's up, that's up two points in the rankings from the prior year. It's up something like seventeen points in the past five years, and thirty-four points, thirty-four points in the rankings. We were one-hundred-seventeenth largest endowment ten years ago, up in eighty-four. In, sort of, more recently, we're halfway through fiscal year 2018, and in that time, we are up about seven percent, though, you know, some of our private equity, private real estate numbers have been coming in. And our, as of December 31st, with sort of those final numbers in, our one, three, and five-year performance numbers are fourteen-point-eight percent, six-point-eight percent, and eight-point-four percent higher. In addition, the staff as well as the committee concluded a long consulting search, you know, given that we have professional endowment staff and the investment management staff. We thought we were going to give our consultant relationship, concluded that in, at the end of February, and have selected the Fund Evaluation Board of Cincinnati as our, as our new consultant. So, that creates an opportunity, of course, with the new consultant, and sort of their new ideas, but in all... So that that creates a opportunity, of course, with the new consultant and sort of their new ideas, but it also creates some challenges with uh going from the old consultant and sort of cutting over. So that cutover was done March thirty-first successfully. Uh, we uh will have our first committee meeting with the new consultant on June sixth. We're all looking forward to that. Um, uh, that concludes my uh my comments on the investment committee. I'll be out any questions.
Uh, thank you, Talat. So when would the committee review the new consultants in terms of understanding the metrics and the performance of the new consultant?
Right, that's been done. Uh, so we did that over the last, I'd say, six months. Uh, we started out uh in the surge and this is really mostly our.
I was thinking primarily on a one-fore basis.
Oh, I see. That that would be on an annual basis.
Okay.
We review, we review our our consultant. Really, um, it's best practice for such a big relationship and a important relationship to um sort of do a search anyway, whether we're uh whether we're not a consultant, it's happening with the consultant every every several years.
And is that a fiscal period or a whole calendar period?
Um, let's just say fiscal. I mean, we work in fiscal fiscal terms. Our our committee uh is chosen in sort of a fiscal terms, so okay, let's let's just say fiscal. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Talat, did you say the year percent increase was twelve point seven or something like that?
Yes, twelve point seven.
So my question is about endowed scholarships. With that degree of increase, what are we, what is our payout now per year on on scholarships? It's always there at four something, right? Are, does that go up now that the endowment?
Well, it it is four percent. Uh, but that that goes up with with the dollar value increasing the endowment. So, uh, you know, ten years ago, the endowment was uh was five hundred million dollars. So two million, so the four percent uh is a bigger number in dollar terms.
I think, well, in fact, the amount goes up because of the value of the endowment, the percentage payout, which is the average. It's fixed by the board as a number and that doesn't change. Because it takes into account the ups and downs that are going to happen in the endowment over the multi-year period time. Why do you want to?
Yes, and it's also smoothed over a twelve-quarter period period time. So even if there's a large increase in the endowment in one year, it it will take time for that to to kick in.
So, Mike, what is our current payout on scholarships now?
It is four percent of of this trailing twelve-quarter average.
Okay, it doesn't seem to.
I can translate that into, I can translate that into dollars.
The dollars change by virtue of the fact that the endowment value changes. The payout rule is a rule that's set by the trustees in the board of governors. That does not change. That's the way it should be put in perspective. That's what all university agents will do. Protect you from the up and the down. You may be understanding it up here, but you're not going to wind up getting whacked down here and you continue your operations.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Yes, Mary?
Thank you. Uh, that ranking that you mentioned in North America, uh, are endowment, is that public and private institutions?
It is, it is. We're on number thirty-three on, uh, speaking of persons.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, Talat. Uh, at this time, I'll ask Mike Gower to speak on audit. Can you bring forth a report? Comments, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar to the committee on audit has met three times since the last report to this board. As members of the committee who are on this board will attest, these have been very full, very active meetings. Among the work that has been done was acceptance of, a review and acceptance of five different audits, uh, selection of external audit firm uh after a competitive process, review of cybersecurity uh on a regular basis, uh, reports from University Office of Ethics and Compliance and Audit and Advisory Services. A lot of things that are reflected in the minutes that are on the portal. I recommend those to you to read and see all the activity there. And I would be happy to answer any members' questions after you read those. Just call me or contact me at any time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, at this time, I would entertain, is there any old business? Okay, hearing none. Before we get to new business, is there any new business? Uh, before I ask one in German, I just wanted to take a moment to uh thank Evan Cabello for coming today. He has worked very closely with the Board of Trustees. Uh, Evan is the president of Russe. And I know that he's, has other students attending today and we certainly appreciate your support and your attendance here today. And I look forward to uh continuation of our working very closely with the uh with the Russe Assembly, if you will, as well as with the Board of Trustees. Uh, if there's no other business to attend to, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, before we adjourn, I was told that there's a a an advisory, a tractor advisory that Kim wants to mention.
So for those of you heading back to the New Brunswick area, there is a overturned tractor trailer um at the intersections of Route eighteen and Route one. Route eighteen is closed on both, going both ways. So um, don't expect to be making it back anytime soon. Uh, just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
All in favor? All right, the meeting is adjourned.